Motion.
Okay, motion open the meeting at seven twenty eight Monday, it was Tuesday, I'm sorry, May twenty eighth, twenty twenty four.
The motion.
Feels like a Monday. First up, uh, possible board reorganization. I guess we vote new members. We'll vote chair, vice chair. Any thoughts, anybody?
Nominate you for chair.
Uh, I don't know if you, if you.
I know you want it.
I know you've mentioned it a couple of times. You're like, I'm willing to step away. I have no problem stepping up. Giving it a shot, giving it a go.
I'll stay in the vice chair slot at the moment.
So would that, is that, would you rather Brad go vice chair because you're kind of hit or miss with your schedule?
And then who takes the chair?
As me, I do chair and have Brad do vice.
I think I'm the most experienced person.
You one hundred percent are.
You are.
And one.
Right, I would, one of the two spots I can't do the chair right now. Otherwise I would, I would.
But if you can't be the vice chair either, then it's not.
Yeah, if you're not here.
With all due respect.
Yeah. Right, I want you here. I'd rather you chair, but you're not.
I would rather see you in more meetings than less.
Yeah. And you can't commit that.
Well, one of the things I'd like to talk about is that what, how this used to work for thirty years was that I would get my schedule and then we would set the meetings.
But it's not, it can't all be. Like this camera around Wally, you know what I mean? It's gotta be.
No, it was always within a day or so in some of the stuff, but lately the, the schedule and then the, the country stuff that's going on right now, but.
Like a week prior, right? You're only like a week.
No.
Ten days.
But he is, she's been on first and third Tuesdays. I mean.
Yeah.
It's been.
Uh, sometimes I don't.
Right. And how long do we have to post, how long prior do we have? Two weeks prior do we have to post a meeting, right?
Uh, forty eight hours excluding the.
Yeah, I don't probably have to move too much.
When a packy comes in.
Cause I, I think things.
It depends on the application, different time.
World's fighting down. I, I think they're gonna be flawless less, so.
I personally, I just want him here because of all the knowledge you have.
Yeah, TJ, my recommendation would be that you talk to Andy or Rebecca and they have online classes. And they're really good, Hermann Valley Planning. And during COVID, I mean, that's where I got a lot of information.
Yeah.
The town would most likely be able to fund those as well.
Correct.
Yeah, I'm gay.
Yeah, we always, we always have a class or two and we do that.
I think all board members should.
Well, I mean, I am, you know, I'm brand new and, you know, I'm smart and a good student, but you know, I've, I've got a knowledge gap that I wanna, that I wanna circumvent.
I can, um, pull the CPT, CPT, TC, CP. Whatever it is, I'll pull their, um, schedule and I'll send it out to everyone.
They're great classes if they're out there.
Yeah, I've, I've done them too, just to. Brush up and they are very helpful.
Sure.
And I have the PowerPoints actually that I can share that from them.
And I'd say, because I know that you and I have spoken, you're like, you want it, cause you're just, you're busy, right?
I'm overwhelmed right now, so.
So I have no problem. I've been, I know it's only been three years, whatever it is, but. Can run a meeting, I got good support, I got good support, you know what I mean? So.
I think everybody should have a shot and I think every time, every year it actually should rotate. Personally, I just did because nobody else wanted to do it, you know.
Can I ask? I mean, so what's the difference? What's the, what's the substantive difference between being a member, being the vice chair and being the chair, other than, other than.
The chair you have to read.
Other than, like, in the formality.
We talked to Andy, Andy, if there's a problem, Andy will reach out to the chair before someone reaches out to the host.
Setting the agenda is, is a substantial part, but every vote counts the same.
No, right, no, no.
There's no difference from a chair to a vice chair to a member.
Leading, leading them up the.
It's just, right, it's largely, it's largely format.
Right.
Not necessarily. The, um, the, the planning board is, is the toughest board in this town to get schooled up on. It takes three to five years to get a full working knowledge. Of, of everything within, within the board, and somebody to control laws, own the timeline, okay, master any law. So that, that's where we typically see us school up and into that. Uh, we used to have other positions, we, we used to have. And inspector through the town, we used to have, uh, the first person on the board, junior person, okay, would be doing minutes. And now we get these great things called recording devices, but you, you learn a lot by just, we used to hand start. Okay, and take them down and put them out and setting agendas and any other things that, that work you right out. And then we get different roles with those responsibilities, uh, that would help out. And you can create different. Uh, different positions on the board. He decides the two. We used to have a lot, everybody had a position that was tagged and everybody checked around. But for, for the upper level positions, you need to know, um, you know, you have to get schooled up and a lot of members don't stick on for the full five years. To get to that level. So that's what I've seen in my thirty two years here now, um, as it's come through and then, but not that everybody couldn't get there. But it just depends on your commitment and, um, you know, years and years and years. Uh, of being on the board and understanding what's coming before us and, you know, there's all kinds of stuff like that. Uh, it helps if you're an engineer, if you've got civil work, if you've done any, like, legal work is easy.
Well, it's, I mean, it takes a broad range of disciplines. I mean, you have, you have a particular discipline, you have, you know, like. We each have disparate skills that are, you know, I don't, I don't, I don't think that it's like, you know, this is more important than that. I can read a Bible too.
Yeah, the Bible, it's.
I've been a lawyer for twenty years, but you know, like.
That's all.
I, right.
So then it's the, so then it comes down to you for the other side, which is the engineering side. So you can read a Bible, but can you?
Well, no, sure, but that doesn't, that doesn't change, like. All of our votes mean the same, so we all have the same responsibility to be coached up, you know, like, we all have to, like, you know, make a crappy vote, it's, it's on you, you know, but. But it doesn't matter if you're, like, you're member four of five, or like, there's some, some artificial, you know, in name only hierarchy, right?
No dictatorship, it's.
No, for sure.
Right, but the big, my, my, you know, you gotta ask the question.
No, of course.
You gotta ask the applicant the questions.
Sure.
Like when Jay comes to the board, you gotta shake him down.
No, I think, I think totally reasonable. The vice chair can ask the question, but the other, like, if, if the not chair or vice chair was super knowledgeable, Wally, you know. You could ask the same question if you would if you were in any other thing. There's nothing you can't do. If you're not one of those things.
The chair goes and just gonna take the narrative.
Well, that's right, that's.
He, he's gonna do the agenda, he's gonna set up the agenda with Andy. I feel bad because there's a lot of times where I just don't think, right now, I'm slammed.
Sure.
So I wouldn't mind to advise if you're not gonna show up. Honest to God, I'm, I don't miss a board meeting. Or it's very rare.
Well, the good news is that summer's coming, so we're not gonna have many meetings there.
So you don't, you don't wanna give up that vice, huh?
No, no, I don't. I, I think, I think I earned, earned my keep at the table. Uh, yeah, I've had a crazy schedule thanks to, uh. You know, all the stuff going on in the world, but that's gonna settle out, so. I'm starting to see that now, so that's good.
All right, well, I swear to God, if you're not here next meeting, I'm gonna be upset. I gotta span you in through the areas.
Then can you make it an agenda item to browbeat him?
Yes.
If he doesn't stand up for the, you know, he's taken, he's, he's been schooled up for thirty years, so.
In full disclosure, I do have a June schedule already, so I'm trying to move that around. Right, I do not have July, which I think we didn't, but we only usually have one meeting in July and one meeting in August. So that shouldn't be a problem, which coattails into this. I don't think we should be doing anything to this until the fall, as far as, um. You know, making a vote to go for a full draft, because we're not gonna.
Oh, the housing production plan?
Yeah.
No, I agree.
That should, that should get kicked down, kicked.
That's.
But that's, we don't have to worry about that right now.
Yeah.
We don't have to worry about that, right?
Right, so in a second, well, I, listen, I'm gonna nominate TJ.
Okay.
I will, I will second.
All in favor? Bye. Wally, I nominate you for vice chair. You missed three meetings, you're out.
Okay.
If you've missed three consecutive meetings.
I will second that, I will.
I think vice chair goes to me.
All right.
You, DL?
Yeah, we just have to tell the world to cut it out.
That'll dangle the carrot in front of you.
All right, yeah, yeah.
Cause you do not wanna lose that to me.
So it's, uh, no, it's, I, I'm sorry, I don't have, I don't have, uh. We used to control what's going on in the Middle East right now, so it affects a lot.
So I, with a caveat of what I just said, can we do that?
I don't know, I, I don't know why you wouldn't be able to. If anything, if that does happen, the board would just have to remotion to actually appoint him as chair.
Vice chair.
I'm sorry, thank you. I, I, but.
That could just be up to.
It is not a power, listen, I don't really wanna power, I don't really care about the power of being chaired or anything. It's just. If you're not here, it's just, what's fair is fair.
Yeah.
It, it, I'm trying to look at some other ways to, to do it, but the, uh, beaming in is good, but it does not work when you're in order. It does not work when you're in a war zone. You, you just don't have any available to you, so that's just, that's. Well, that sounds cool.
Yeah, it's gonna be moving soon and we're gonna be getting an E C in person too.
Fix out the windows and turn on.
As you know, we're gonna see for the meetings to turn to vice chair, chair as.
Oh, it makes me feel a little bit.
So.
I'll fly that motion. Wally to be vice chair, he misses three consecutive meetings and it goes up for another one.
I second that.
I, I mean, on discussion, I don't know legally, we can say that, we don't have to check on that, we'd have to check that, but.
It's like, it's like, I don't want to waste a town dollars, right?
We got that shit going on.
It's a way to put Wally back on point.
Geez, forget that crap.
Yeah, that's still good. Well, and, and, you know, if I miss a meeting, we, we'll try to get in the way in on it or something like that, we'll work it out. And if you don't like it, we'll, we'll do a re vote. We won't leave the town council, spend five thousand.
Look at our, um, I would need to take a closer look again at our, um, rules and regulations for the board and see if master on our laws is anything. I don't think.
You could appoint, if, if somebody leaves the board, you can just appoint them again. It's just a yield courtesy. You know, for years, we didn't do any, anything because everybody was comfortable in the position they were in. So, so, yeah, so mix that and let's.
Please let the gentleman.
Is that a friendly amendment?
That's a probably, yeah, yeah.
We just.
All in favor?
Bye.
I'm abstaining.
You should.
Your wife's there, does that take effect?
Right now.
Oh, great.
I just felt like a giant weight off my shoulders.
Kind of boy.
Okay, you ready?
Yes.
All right. Uh, S T Park, four forty one Main Street, site plan review waiver.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Jay Ogden. I'm here for S T's Park, S T Park for the trust.
Actually, we can stop for one second. I think I only have like every other page of this.
Yeah, me too.
We're using a lot of pages in the other.
Number.
Even though it's double sided, it like.
Yeah, it's like, I've, I've got odds for this one and I had evens for the other or something.
Oh, sorry.
No, it's no problem.
Get those printed right now.
I, I just.
Or this one is, this one is, we have odds, the last one was the bad evens, yeah.
All right.
The document you guys are looking at, you're questioning what? So I said in two thousand fifteen.
Yeah. I just wanna make sure we give you full trip.
Sure.
We sat in.
Uh, no, I don't.
Thank you. You waited so long to hear these parliamentary issues, the least we can do is give you full trip and.
I like seeing how it all happens. Brad might be somewhat familiar with this plan. Um, there's a forty by eighty building, somewhat central to the middle of the plan that you guys have in front of you. That's a proposed new building to be built on the site within the security fence line. So it will fall into the, um, use of small business support.
So the other two buildings that appear, the whole buildings that I was saying. There was the main building, then there were two zones there that were both there and still.
They were, I believe, off to the side over here.
Right.
Yeah, as far as I can recall, there was never anything in this vicinity. Yeah, there was.
If it both do?
Yeah.
First you get kicked out of, you know, chairmanship and now it just. Now it's like a chef, watch out to you. You'll be lucky.
This is.
Go take some meetings.
Two thousand seventeen.
Go take some meetings.
Had done of the entire site.
It won't come back.
Four R Vs.
This is the main building. Building, there were three open, like, mean to structures.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
This way.
It was open on one side.
They were torn down.
Okay.
And then this was a phase two that was proposed in two thousand fifteen and two thousand seventeen.
Yeah.
And this is approved under an existing. Site plan re, uh, site plan review, the Protection District permit and the zoning board of appeals permit.
Right, so.
So these three proposed buildings would be located over here.
Right.
They were redrawn through a process that I don't fully understand. Um, they were. Initially, I believe proposed to be additional business use buildings, but my understanding was the residential neighborhood on Whorf Drive and Whorf Lane. Preferred them to be redesigned as residential buildings. So those three, sorry, these, yeah, I guess three buildings, um, but there were four. Are basically, when the commentary was made in the other room about what's S T Park as a conceptual plan, those are the three buildings they were talking about. But that was two thousand fifteen, two thousand seventeen, nothing has happened there.
Okay.
In the interim, S T Park for small business support is somewhat filled to capacity. They just wanna create. Get confused if it's three bays or four bays. Let's say it's four bays of like contractor space.
So twenty by four is, is what I saw from the other. So Mr. Chairman, let me plug to Justin, this is Mr. Chairman for us time. So. Jay came into, into the zoning board as well, so some of the documentation that we're trying to do discovery on is. Two thousand and fifteen to two thousand seventeen. It was permitted, but nothing was acted on the permits and feel that the permit is last.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So this may.
Who did that though?
They didn't act on it.
Right.
They didn't act on the permit.
But you're working for them, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So, so Bento's here, you can have a, you can have a plan, you don't wanna use it, you want to use.
So well, you know, you know, specifically in our bylaws is if you don't do, if you don't act on it in three years, it's gone, it's dropped. So my caution on the site plan waiver would be probably wait until the zoning board is done with what we have going on.
Thank you so much.
So it'd be a mute, it would be a moot point if it's not an allowable, you know, use.
So what's it, well, if it's. If I remember the special permit when this kicked over, this was for commercial use. It will still be commercial use.
It's still commercial use, but the permit already lapsed, so.
So you mean the initial special permits would be repiled?
So one of the things I'd like to sort of interject here, if I may.
But there's a little bit more, Jake, right?
There was.
There was, there was a buildup. It was approved in two thousand and fifteen as max buildup, right?
Yeah.
No more buildings to be produced as of the existing site plan.
Right.
Back in two thousand fifteen. We're under the, we're not a hundred percent sure if there could be another building added. And again, I'm one of five members and we haven't got as far as.
You're talking about the zoning board?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'm agreeing with you.
Okay, we have.
Haven't gotten that far.
We haven't got as far as, is there already been a max buildup, is buildup on the site and is there going to be? An allowable number of buildings since that permit has lapsed.
All right, so, so the, the history of S T's. When it came in.
Doesn't matter, there's, there's a zoning, there's, there's a whole zoning list of what can and can't be done. And the zoning list says no more building of two, since two thousand fifteen. They went in back to the zoning board and they asked for a, another building. And the zoning board agreed, but the permit lapsed. So now that the permit lapsed.
They're back in front of the zoning board.
You're back in front of the zoning.
Be asking, and then, so the procedure is they have to okay it before we can.
That would be my, that would be what my request would be. If you guys go ahead of the zoning board.
Right, then maybe, then you may have inconsistent, inconsistent.
Right.
But, but what I was trying to point out was that the reason why the special permit was issued with that particular waiver. Okay, that was on there for a max buildup, was that they were utilizing the buildings at hand, with the exception of, of the buildings in the back. It might have been this one, okay, um, that was put in. So, so when it was abandoned as a lumberyard. Okay, the whole thing was to spruce up the buildings that were there and utilize the buildings that were in place. Okay, and that's what that special permit was issued for. There was a building added. Okay, and I think it was, I'm pretty sure it was on the side. It was a slab and it was a metal build, yeah. Okay, so that one I know was a new building that was placed in there and then we had the other.
That building was, it wasn't permitted. Was, was that the building that was put up before it was even donated?
That's right, that's exactly correct. Okay, and then we had the issues with the entering and exiting at all hours and the, and then we had all the paint supplies and all the other weird stuff down there and the strange boats and everything else that was in the back. Okay, so yeah, the special permit would either have to be. Reapplied for, because it doesn't, we go for so long for that particular.
That's a zoning and doing this.
Right, right. So if not, it's a full reapply.
So we're jumping in front of them without, without what you said. I think that makes sense.
Right.
Am I right in it?
It's something that just has sweet, like, with all, with other developments, they have to be filed.
If, if the permit, if the permit is dead, then it's a new application. Okay.
So my caution to the board would be, don't jump in front of the zone.
Right, yeah. And so they'll say, they'll say whether it's dead or not, or whether they'll agree to allow it. Or whether they need a new application, so it could be any of those three.
It's, if, and then it goes through site plan review, the shovel building can be there and that stuff, so it's a whole new application, it's what it gets and then it flies on itself.
So it sounds like we can't take action on these.
No, I didn't think of this.
The board can do whatever the board wants to do. My suggestion is the board waits and.
It sounds like.
I think it's, I think it would be good for the applicant, not to put the top of the horse as well.
You can say, okay, but then you, you still have to hold a whole process for everything else, so. So I like to fly a motion, just so that we wait for it to happen.
Excuse, can I just, Mr. Chair, could I just make a couple of comments?
You're here.
Too far forward. Uh, I did wanna just make the point that two thousand fifteen decision. Uh, it discusses a phase one and a phase two. I do not know, and Mr. Sorensen might, I just wanna miss this for a second. Uh, might be able to shed some light on this, but I don't understand from my perspective exactly why. All the existing buildings were basically covered under phase one.
Mm-hmm.
That was, I think, incorporated the. Questionable origins of the building.
Yeah.
Like it that.
I, I think that was.
Set up a procedure for handling. The ongoing uses of all of these buildings and then phase two, which hasn't had anything happen to it. Represents three or four new buildings that were proposed at some point. So I only bring that up because phase one. Has indeed happened and is ongoing. So this permit. Is somewhat still valid. I don't know why it's divided into two parts. I wouldn't argue that phase two is dead because nothing began on it. I just don't understand why it's all under the same.
Well, it's not true. So, so phase one was the fixing up of the existing buildings that were in place and to activate, um.
It sets up.
As it was.
Utilize.
Right, right, it was turning it over from, from a lumberyard into, and it was, and it was so that people could get in there, get moving, revenue going and fixing up the ghost. The, the mystery building. Well, uh, directly on the property line, which I, I believe eventually had to be moved off the property line. Uh, because of it, it's a double wall on it. Um, for that purpose, they just had to roll it and slide it forward and get it off the property line. Uh, so, so this was part of the new structure buildings on, on phase two. This was, this over here. Never really was straightened out, but the proposal was, was an overhang system, uh, for large RVs. To park in, you know, very large bays just open and to get these large RVs in, and that was a new structure building. This whole residence part thing, there, there was a, there's always. Issues between those two streets because this is sandwiched into the middle. Um, and they had some good points, um, back in the day about, you know, where things going on, two, three in the morning and, you know, people cruising in, crashing boats to shore and all that stuff. So, so that was legit, so.
Who of those contentious neighbors are gone?
Yeah. Okay.
But there was an abbot that came in.
Yeah.
And he left when he heard what it was about.
The owner is the same owner. There's not, there's not been any changes as far as that concerned. All the interests of ownership are the same.
No, so we have a, we have a valid special permit to run the operation as this says. Okay.
Phase one.
Phase one. And phase two, although phase two, the, the only thing that was submitted that was actually gone on, okay. Was for the RVs. It was not for a housing complex of any sort.
Where does the no new buildings factor in this?
The no new buildings was on phase one until it was completely restored, was the initial.
Is phase one and phase two under the same permit? Is it one permit or is it two separate permits?
I thought, you know, they went in for a separate permit in two thousand and fifteen and two thousand and seventeen.
And that was the one.
And this is what we're having trouble with. Since the permit lapsed, right, we haven't had a meeting since.
Like, and that's why my question.
Only one, so.
And it was nine years ago.
Right, so the board felt like they were not a hundred percent sure. If he has to come back.
So I sent, yeah, that's accurate. So the board felt as though, um, it, it's a whole new board since. The zoning board had originally permitted this, so the board wanted to go back and do additional research, so I compiled. Um, a significant amount of historic documents, historic, I mean, we're not talking long than twenty years ago, but.
Historical documents.
Were, um, old plans and applications and special permits that were issued, um, to provide to these zoning boards so that they can. Kind of brush up on the history so that they can be better informed.
When are they meeting next?
They, the next meet on June fifth, so next Wednesday.
So Jay, you're already in front of the zoning board as well.
Yes.
Just as to work.
Yeah, honestly, at your last meeting, I wasn't sure how the zoning board meeting was gonna go. So we were on your agenda as well, and I may have gotten confused between something I was doing with conservation and they said, we'll just keep you on as a placeholder.
Yep.
And I may have had a calendar mishap. I can't explain why I went in here two weeks ago, but.
So, I mean, it sounds like it's just a, um, smarter decision if we just entertain a motion to table this and after the impact, the result.
Do we know if they, if we think that they would actually vote on this stuff?
We're not sure, I mean, there's.
Would they be prepared to vote on, on that issue?
Depends on what comes in, you know.
I, I can send out the documents I compiled for the zoning board to the planning board as well, because as we've talked about, Wally's the only member who is, are, are around during this time, so. There are some, uh, planning documents, but a lot of them are zoning board documents. Oh, is that your, yeah, so, um, they, a lot of them are zoning.
Free board.
Somebody turn them on the.
His house is longer, his house is longer. Oh, well, he's getting to know you already, man.
We don't, we don't have, this is just a, a waiver, we'll just, we'll just continue this until the next meeting.
Yeah, a couple more quick comments.
Sure, yeah.
Uh, the two thousand fifteen permit is from the planning board. Uh, for site plan approval and aquifer protection, the two thousand seventeen permit is from the Z B A. Um, so they're not, it's not like.
Right.
They're related, obviously, but they're not one supersedes the other. They just have different aspects of control over the same site. Regarding the two thousand fifteen permit, there was a modification approved in two thousand seventeen. To change the buildings that were shown in the two thousand fifteen site plan to the buildings that are shown on that other paper I was just. Showing around a second ago, which were, my understanding was.
Consigliere?
Proposed three or four buildings of multifamily housing, um, which is the portion of the two thousand fifteen permit which hadn't begun. So the minor modification that changed those three buildings. Was signed off in two thousand seventeen. As a minor modification to this two thousand fifteen permit. So my point of saying that is that in two thousand seventeen, jockeying around seventeen thousand square feet of buildings. Seemed to be a minor modification. So adding a three thousand square foot building.
Within a couple of years of the project picking up, about seven years, nine years later.
And, yeah, so just to, is, is there any, is there any, do you have any body about why they took so long? To do, to move to the next, to next phase? Uh, my understanding was that the three buildings along the side was never an initial goal. It was never, uh, I don't know what drove it to be a multifamily claim. And then I also believe that it sort of became a moot point because. The project on the apartment complex on Salem Street slid into. Whoever the state review process is, they initiated that permit. So it didn't seem practical to initiate a second forty B project, which could, I think, fall flat on its face as soon as the one that started first was approved.
So esoteric, like, if the idea is that the whole plan of this phase has kind of changed over these years, doesn't it make sense that there will be a new modification because this is not the new use that was contemplated in two thousand seventeen?
Who approved the month?
Oh, the sole signatory on this, uh, gentleman by the name of James Reer.
Zoning.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, from the planning board, as the chair, he just signed the, I assume there's a public hearing referencing this somewhere.
Yeah.
Um, to discuss the minor modification.
I remember the month on, on the Winnebago.
I remember the month on, on the Winnebago. On, so to speak, it was just basically a big lean to the park.
I don't understand why he never tried to do.
I mean, but. That's ancillary. About today, but.
You know, I mean, with rocks and.
I mean, with that, I'm gonna make that motion a lot. The other thing that I would kind of draw your attention to is that this two thousand fifteen decision. Which I think governs the way the site is being operated now, does, from my perspective at least, seem like a very good basis. To consider referring to, should you guys want to reopen this site plan review of the, of the site. Uh, everything there now was done as a result of a prior decision of this board. So to rework entrances and gates and fencing and lighting is entirely prerogative, which is. It's done that way now because another group in town had decided that that's the way it should be done.
You you're just gonna have a new application, that's it, that's all.
Well, I believe, isn't that site a hundred percent impervious surface? I don't remember, I I took through there when it was SD Lumber, I mean, that's by myself.
Construction was going up and we had some issues and I was there a lot, particularly at night where we had the light issue and all that.
I mean, the whole site is like fifteen acres and I want to say it was about. Four acres of impervious area there. But I can get those numbers, they should be on this plan, but I didn't see them last, and I looked.
Yeah, I I think it it would be.
Makes total sense.
To go, yeah, you'll get the zoning board in there too, but then you gotta come back here for the other stuff over there, only because of the length of time. The length, the length of time, it's just a new application, not that it, you don't have the space for it, not that it probably wouldn't work, it's it's just.
We feel really confident that the, there's, there's clear language in the bylaws as it's lapsed, if it's.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's definitely, yeah, we we actually found the language. I believe it was three years.
So should we, should we let the zoning board know that that's what, something that we, we are aware of and maybe they should share that information?
Well, we had a brand new zoning board, they they're just gonna work, work through the whole process, but yeah, that application was dead, it's just a new application, but it doesn't. I mean, you've been through this before, it's not a big deal, I mean, a new site plan review.
He is on the zoning board in truth.
Yeah.
So for the site plan, site plan approval shall lapse after one year from the grant thereof, if the substantial use thereof is not sooner commenced except for a good cause. Such approval may, for good cause, be extended and written in writing by the planning board on written request, request from either.
So that was one of the things I was asking about, why is it taking so long, is there, is there a good cause? Well, from my perspective, like phase one. Up and running, phase two, abandoned.
This is, this building was an end of the business.
You look like he was looking for phase two. We're supposed to look like it was gonna be a forty B. That's what it, that's what it looked like.
So then, I mean. Do you just want to withdraw and and just submit a new application, seeing that these are all barriers that appear to be pretty clear?
You didn't have anything submitted, dude.
No. Okay, no. I didn't know if we could catch you overnight when he was flying and. The vice chair sees that that's not. Also, enough, it's Tuesday night, who does anything on Tuesday night?
So, um, I can also. Do you want to withdraw?
We didn't submit.
Yeah.
Well, withdraw the waiver.
Yeah, um.
Just submit a letter.
I mean, if we were to.
If you got some approval from the zoning board.
Zoning board on June fifth.
Yep.
Then you guys have your next meeting on June.
I, I still don't think you should go by a waiver process, it's something meaningful, it's been too long.
I agree, let's watch, let's, that'll be the next meeting, I would, I would have him, I would have him, you know, to draw.
Yeah.
The reflect.
So, I mean, I would just ask in the interim, if you guys would, if you had like a Tuesday night free. Um, you could just read through the. Approval of phase one, consider the site, consider what changes you would want to make if there was another three thousand square feet of building. Inside the security fence line, under the same operating.
Yeah, you're just gonna do the same standard review and incorporate the gates, uh, the time out, the hours of operation, et cetera, into the, into the application.
Yeah, so we would just basically come back with this, on an application showing this.
And the, and the site plan and the drainage and the other stuff that needs to go with it, that's pretty much it, that's just a new application, that's all.
Would be turned on as well, site circulation, sorry, take your steam away.
Fire truck, fire, access. The standard, the standard.
Developing a new site.
Not much of it's gonna change from what's here, well, that's, that's happy to show.
That's fine, I mean, if we were parking, compared to the size of that building, it's at least eighty feet long. And it was long enough to house. Twenty, twenty full size Winnebago. I mean, monsters, so that's how big that, that building is.
That's over here. It was over in this.
So it's.
You guys can go, well, it brings back to two thousand seventeen. Um. You could look on my map and and scroll the aerials back, so. And see what's, you see.
Yeah.
I can pull a pectomics into it.
And it was, and it's a business site, so it's a commercial property, always been a commercial property.
Yeah.
The issues that we had with the residents down over here and over here, okay, with lighting, noise. Both my fashion, the deck, the beach, it was like normal deal. Um, coming in at two o'clock in the morning and we addressed all those at the time. It's for the most part extraordinary, not.
Well, you're saying now the neighbors are different, so they may have different. I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, Jay.
This property and the property across the street and to certain, except property on the side of the power lines here, the rail trail. Are commercial and business. In sense. If somebody were to, and I know, I think we talked about this at some point before, to proceed with trying to rezone. These parcels so that it more fit into a nutshell of business. Like, one of the reasons we're here, one of the reasons we're to zoning is because it's a residential zone. If this were zoned, business, industrial, industrial.
This would be.
This would be handled to the building inspector and then come to you guys for site plan review and the.
The, the initial, uh, because it was a question mark when when S D's went out, it was, what was going to be? And it was one of the sites that we were eyeballing, um. It is like Center Street for an overlay district of affordable apartments, one of the units, and that's what we were initially looking at for the large parcel. It was also, we even announced it was one of the applicants that, for the new school. Uh, which was coming down the property, because the, I think the town at the time got a first right of refusal to see if we could purchase the property, what we could do with it, but it also had a ton of issues. I mean, we had the SS Middle parked over there and a few other things that were down in the back, but nobody really knew what it was. So, so the town kind of went on that, but we did keep it in mind and the zoning didn't change, and I I must have proposed myself. At least twenty five zoning changes for different areas of the town to put them in the correct zone. And and some passed.
Yeah.
And some didn't. Um.
It does seem to be that Washington Street, you seem to have this disjointed business district.
And it's residential primarily. It comes all the way down, School Street to Main Street, that area had, we had tweaked it over the years. And remember, the original zoning goes back to the fifties and sixties, and it wasn't until we got it out. And we did it by law, actual blocks, and that was part of our master plan that we did, it took, you know, it took seven years to do that. And technically bridge all the parcels together, uh, by engineering surveys, like USGS. So that's the zoning map you see, that's how long it's still. So, uh, so there was a lot of question of, you know, you had residential zones going right through a commercial building. And it's like, okay, please, somebody live on the left side or not? And so all that stuff had to get cleaned up, so that's why that was, that was the zoning pitch to the town to change a district. Okay, other than get the required, would take a lot of money.
But that's in the purview, the zoning board, right?
Correct.
So, that's not even, that's not even our bag.
So.
Yeah, just asking, if it seems reasonable to to you guys as a board, if this, if somebody were to seek rezoning this to a commercial use. Or to commercial zone, to incorporating it into a commercial zone.
You'd have to go all the time.
Yeah. Reaction if you guys would think that's reasonable or if you would, I mean, now is a massive sewer main that goes by it, so if somebody were to level this and.
It might.
Convert it to a housing complex, it could be done much more easily now than it could have been.
Yeah, before.
Before, uh, but if it were rezoned as commercial or industrial, in Groveland and some other towns, probably considered from time to time. Splitting their tax base, you can get a higher rate for business and commercial uses, if you had this rezoned as business or commercial. Um.
It wasn't a. You would have to get the searches involved or.
Just, I guess, had a loose feeling of.
I haven't actually visited that.
I'd have to look at it, yeah, the fifteen years, but wouldn't be opposed.
And if it, if it makes sense for the total package, and that's how you get parcel by parcel.
Right.
Yeah, you can't do a whole.
Spot zoning and stuff, but it's.
Spot zoning is unique. Um, and. It's a. You, you don't have to make that decision right now, you can.
Can I just say in your, you know, maybe get, continue to your next meeting if that was gonna be after June fifth?
It it will be.
And you're not, you may not get an answer on June fifty.
Throw it back on for.
Right.
The one meeting in July or see in September.
I would love to give you an answer, it's just the way everything was written.
It was, there's a lot of history.
Well, lots changed since then too, so.
Listen, if you, if you looked at the, if you, when you look at it, look where it says parking, plenty of parking. Doesn't say how many spaces are needed and what, it just says.
The only bylaw changed post that decision.
Yeah. All the application that you guys received, each of these little.
No, 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 on the, um, the decision. On the, one of the. Plenty of parking, I'm like, you've got to be.
It wasn't hard count that I read. It's like, it's like hundreds.
I, I mean, it's good, but it's big enough for time.
Big, yeah, it's, it's not gonna be an issue, just. At the end of the day.
We're high up on the language.
Yeah. I think our meeting, our second is the eleventh, I think is what likely should be, unless that changes, but, and you need to.
I don't think you're gonna get a zoning board decision.
Maybe we can revisit.
But at least we'll have it on ours and.
Yeah, we have the same dates, come back to see you guys. Nice meeting you. Nice to meet you.
Good to see you, Jay.
See you. Thank you, guys. I can stay and talk about the MBDA if you want.
Yeah, what are you guys doing?
Brad.
Brad.
What?
Not for here. We're recording. Uh, all right, update on nine twenty nine, nine thirty one Salem Street.
Yep, so, um, you will see a report from UTS in your meeting packet, um, I did get email confirmation from T E C.
Yes.
They are, I, I see what I did wrong when I bring them out, sorry, sorry. Um, but I can, um, so, T E C did confirm that, um. The. Cylinder testing was all set, um, they said. That reviewing the most recent report, it appears the compressive strength reports for the set, for set one are now within the range. Of the four thousand PSI requirements set according to design. So that is good, um, the reason there hasn't been additional development at the site or additional movement at the site right now is because, um. They are being held up in the state fire marshal, getting their permits for the vaults, so that's kind of put a halt, um, that's again with the, the state. Um, they're all set with us to continue to move forward, um, but they can't move forward without the state, so that is where that sits.
The state isn't going to use it.
No, I can't imagine they would be with that, so, um, but yeah, so that's. That's good, that we have this information and that, so the, um, concrete testing is, is officially.
Done it all, all conditions good. And we use a days. Seven fourteen twenty eight.
They give you the fracture type, and then you can look and see. All right. Anyone else have a questions on that? Okay, moving on, correspondence, email from Bill Daley dated May twentieth, twenty twenty four. All right.
It's on the very back, yes.
I'll read the email.
Yeah, well, I think you can stick mine, I'm sorry, that's. If anyone is.
It's gonna be okay. Okay, nobody's trying to.
Then there's something.
That was psyched.
Then there's something wrong with my.
All right, so this is a email from Bill Daley, dated May twentieth, uh, to Annie. Annie Hope all as well, could you please consider this email as correspondence for the five twenty eight, twenty fourth planning board meeting? Asking to be put on the agenda for the following planning board meeting. As a concern to butter, I have a handful of questions regarding the Nelson Street drainage issues and construction projects. That may impact future development on Nelson Street. I will forward the packet prior to the first June meeting, respectfully, Bill Daley. Okay. But that's. This is the meeting, but he's gonna send everything off.
He's gonna, he was asking to be placed on the next planning board agenda. So you just said that was gonna be June eleventh, so I can communicate with him that. The board is, or the chair is happy with having that be on the June eleventh agenda, I can let him know, so we can send the information over for you guys to review prior to your meeting.
Is that the next meeting we?
Um, the first, so because of, um, this meeting and we're meeting with the Board of Selectmen.
Right.
For the Housing Production Plan, um, we are in the last, we are in the fourth Tuesday of the month. Um, so the first Tuesday of June would be the fourth.
Next week.
Um, the third would be the eighteenth, um, I can just email Jay if the board wants to change that date, um, but. It, I mean, it's up to, it's up to you guys, um, obviously, if you want to do.
I'm available, uh, I'm around, so, which one? All of them. Seeing that we leave this week, do we wait until the eleventh and the seventh, that's next week?
Yeah, that would do sense.
We're gonna meet on the fifth, so we're gonna meet that way.
And then that would be good because then at least we got an idea of what happened out of that, so that we can. You know, at least be on the same page as.
And we don't really have anything else on the agenda, so it's not like we have to.
I think, Bill, I, I, I can't speak for Bill, but I think it'd be all right if he comes along.
I, I can't imagine it was.
Bill and I recently spoke and hopefully we were going to be on the same page.
Okay, yes, so good, yeah, June eleventh. All right.
Now, it was seven P M.
Seven, yes. Tom Player update.
Alrighty, um, so a couple of these things were touched upon, uh, incidentally with the Housing Production Plan update. Um, one thing that was mentioned was one eighty one our School Street as, um, some of our members were last year. They were in for a preliminary subdivision plan that the board denied, um, they decided to power ahead and do a definitive subdivision plan. Um, they are out this week getting, um, survey results and soil testing, um. I don't have any additional information, I don't know if they have changed their plan, given the, um, feedback that they received from the board and abutters last year. Um, that's the one that abuts Whitestones, but there aren't any.
Yeah.
It was a big full house, yep. So, um, that will be incoming shortly, again, they're just out doing the soil testing and surveying now, they will connect to see where the survey, of the soil testing is. For stormwater, um, I told them that they should test each lot, given the concerns. Of the abutters, so, um. There's that, um, again, also mentioned, um, thirty six Garrison Street, that, that is the field on Garrison Street over there. Um, as I mentioned, Nichols Trust owns it, um, Bethany Homes, who is the company that manages Nichols Village. Um, are looking to develop the site, it would be ninety units of affordable older adult housing, sixty five older. And when we're talking about affordable, in this case, we're talking about, um, seventy percent, I think, of the ninety units would be affordable. And that affordable affordability looks, um, more like thirty percent area median income, forty percent area median. Um, et cetera, et cetera, there will be a few full price units, um, they would all be one bedroom. Um, they're still obviously working on their plan, but they are going to be doing for, prior to application, a, um. Public engagement session, um, just so that they can start their conversations early with, um, abutters.
Do you have a picture of this?
I do not.
Which directly fucks.
Yes, yeah, I can get you on Wally, I just.
And that project, have you seen it?
Yes, we did a TRC. Yes, we did a T R C.
So it's like a hotel.
Um, they, so it, it looks like two buildings. They are, um, I think they use, they said they were like T-sheets so that, um, it doesn't just look like a wall of building. It would have some. Dimension definition, and they're pulling inspiration for the design from the original home that was on that lot. They were able to find a picture from, I think it worked down, um, so they're going to be using that, um. There'll be two buildings that, um, kind of interconnects. The parking would be a loop on the outside with a center area, um, with like a gizmo or something like that.
And how big is that lot?
That lot is, I believe. I wanna say about ten acres, yeah, I don't know, I'm not positive, but it's, it's a sizable lot, but they're not thinning. It's very well buffered with vegetation right now from the adjoining lots and they're not touching any of that. Um, with their, the way they're. Between the buildings, but, um, it wouldn't. I don't, not like, I know Nichols has trails and I don't think. Bethany.
Mantha, who's. Who's the engineer?
Uh, Hancock is the engineer. No, I don't remember the gentleman's name, I'm sorry, um, from Hancock, can you be right?
Just the degree.
So, um. Yeah, Bethany Holmes is spearheading it. So, uh, his name is Jared.
So is Nichols himself coming in or? Or, uh, any of the staff from the original Nickel Village, which is Dixian and?
Jared Stewart is the gentleman's name. No, we, no one from the Nichols Trust has done it, um, from my understanding, the way it's worked is that. Nichols essentially gave Bethany Holmes the stamp to go ahead and represent them.
And is this the project that is approved and put through is gonna bump us over the threshold on the community situation?
No, that is the Soul Street project. Oh, even without this one, we would be over with just.
So we're gonna have to do a whole bunch of things to comply ultimately.
Yeah, so, um, so look out, I, I'll obviously share the information once we do schedule their engagement session for ease, it's probably gonna be a town hall. Um, just because it can be recorded, broadcast, and it is a good meeting space. Um, one oh six King Street is going very well. I believe they have four lots left, um. And a couple of them are already ticketed for folks, they're just going through the purchase and sale agreements and whatnot, but they have been very good. With, um, paying their inclusionary fee as they sell their lots to be released from their covines. Um, to touch on another thing we were talking about, MBTA communities, the town is working with Inez Associates. Who did our, um, comprehensive master plan on, um. Getting that more in gear, Rebecca has more info on it, but so look out for a public engagement session within the next few months. Um, regarding, again, of course, share that with everyone, um, but we are, I stepped out when, um, Kayla was talking about it. But we are very much looking into and, and staying up to date on all of the. Litigation that is ongoing with Milton and the Attorney General's Office.
That's talent talking now.
Yeah.
Milton opted out and also is officially in non-compliance.
Was Reading number one?
So Milton is the only one whose deadline has passed that they still are not. Reading, I believe their deadline is twenty twenty-four. End of twenty twenty-four, so they're technically not out of compliance yet. So Milton is the only one, and I think.
Reading is an MBTA town. They're not an adjacent town.
So they saw until twenty, uh, twenty, uh, December thirtieth.
Even similar, a lot of towns are gonna start just waiting, kind of wait as long as they possibly can to see what happens.
The small town adjacents who all have the twenty twenty-four.
Personally, I feel like. It's the beginning of the end of the year.
Depends on how you look at it.
What they make you do, what the.
But if we're in compliance, we're in compliance, I mean, something you can do about it, but the question is that the Merrimack Valley Plan is, uh, from what I'm seeing here. Is, uh, it is basically a widget that they're proposing to all the towns, because that's what Merrimack Valley does. They do a lot of good stuff. But Groveland's been on top of this for four decades almost.
Well, and the, the thing of it is, and she made the point, it's not even built. Units, it's, you know, it's zone four, so we're like ahead of the game even there, so there's, it's a real, really don't have anything for anybody to brag about. These projects can forward, there's nothing else that we have to do.
No, but it makes some of the, you're right, and I think some of the language in there about trying to put a second structure on the existing lot and get it to the affordable housing, I mean. Uh, I grew up in T V, you know, that's five thousand square foot lots there, and that's exactly what they did in a lot of areas, so that's out, but we don't need to do that here. And we should not put that language in, into this plan on that. This was written as a boilerplate for a lot of other towns, they just kind of threw some Groveland hundreds.
How long until, until that project is, you know, the, the first, the one that pushes us over?
Oh, the Soul Street project?
Yeah.
So they, um, they're right on the cusp of receiving their building permits and that receiving your building permit, not foundation permits, building permits. Explicitly will get them on to the subsidized housing inventory.
So we would be, so we should definitely wait to submit any plans. Which would be happening from when I saw.
Two thirds of this. Right, because it, it doesn't apply, yeah? Well, plus we already have some master plan. Plan on having any type of. I'd like to see some type of documentation for the public. Layman's. Like, what, what it is, what this MBTA, what it, what, what it is, why we're, why we have to do it.
Absolutely.
How it'll affect the town. And what we know when, but.
Just comply with it.
Yep.
And I think we did, but that's why I wanna say it here.
A flyer, I have plenty more of anyone else.
I think the ultimate last sentence in that was that the power comes down to the people. If you don't want this, you vote no.
But there would be no reasons to vote no, but for staying with the Communities Act, because we're already compliant, why would?
We, we aren't, nope, they're very different.
Okay, wait, okay, so, I'm sorry, let me know.
Yeah, so, um, MBTA's Community Act, to boil it down to the smallest degree. And I can go further into it, but it means we have to zone fifteen units per one acre. So that's really what MBTA zoning is, fifteen units per one acre. The compliance we're talking about with the Soul Street projects is about the forty B process and affordable units. MBTA does not have to be affordable, you can make them affordable, and I think all communities want that.
So how many units do they want us today?
Groveland is required to zone a hundred and thirty units.
And how close are we? Have, we haven't done that yet?
No, we have not.
When we talk about the overlay district, that's what we're talking.
Okay, so fifteen units an acre is, is the MBTA. Of it, so, but you know, other communities, again, I, 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 I consume as much information as I can on it for Groveland's benefit. And, you know, a lot of communities just zone over larger existing projects already, um. And or they do try to zone, you know, folks have mentioned zoning over one fifty seven street to actually see production, but it's not a production mandate, it is simply. So, you know, and those are the possibility, those alternatives, whether we zone over something we already have, whether we. Zone over something that could actually be developed is something that that, um, and as an associates is looking at and helping us with.
And the community knowing what a no vote means. Should be known, right? If we say no to the zoning, because we know what zoning does, zoning opens it up for other things. So if we say no to it, what do we lose?
We don't necessarily know until we see what happens to go.
We know partially, we know that we'll lose on grant funding, that goes without saying. Milton, I happen to be from Milton, it's where I grew up, so I'm very well aware. They lost funding from a grants and, uh, I'm sorry, a dam and seawall. To fix, uh, a seawall in town because they did not comply with MBTA's, that has nothing to do with housing, so. And this governor has also said that they are, would look at school funding, which is terrifying for communities such as ours.
And it looks like we're getting, we're doing this, this town, at least lately, it seems, is doing a great job getting grants. For all manner of. To bite that hand is gonna be, it's gonna hurt a lot of different.
Seawall does Milton.
Yeah, it's very tidal in certain parts. The marshes that you go over on the expressway are Milton.
But, but the zoning said that they've been talking about in here, like since allowing this second structure, all this. But the overlay, but the overlay district, like for instance, on Center Street, that's exactly what that was, why we purchased that. Okay, was an over, yeah, was an overlay district for affordable housing, there was once upon a time a school in there, strawberry fields, the whole nine yards. Uh, all the ball fields are gonna be relocated into that facility. Okay, with a, with a senior housing complex in the middle, like a Brooksbury Village type operation going there.
Well, now we got Nichols.
Okay, now, well, Nichols was an animal, because the population grew.
I thought that would affect the apple.
How much money?
But. But that was the max population, when I did the build out calculations, that would have put the, the max build out was twelve hundred units in there, which would have tripled the size of what happened there. Is in that facility, when you go twelve hundred units times five. I mean, that was huge, so, but that was still, is still on the table.
To apartment just now, so that wouldn't be affected.
It's a thirty million dollars, huh? Thirty million dollar.
Water treatment?
Yes, that would be expensive.
That's something we're trying to see great.
Yeah, so.
Well, that's federal grant, I think, right?
We have two failing dams right now, and the only way we can fix those without an override. Or a death explosion or something of that nature is through grant.
Yeah, failing dams.
On Salem Street and Washington Street. Yeah. So grants for our communities like ours are, are very important and, and important infrastructure too. Um, but, so we know those will be taken if we do not comply, but we don't know what else could happen. And that is where we're waiting on the Milton. Decision, I believe their next date is in October.
We also don't get a blow from. We stand up for what we do, what we're required to do, what we think is right for the town, we submitted, we comply.
That's exactly what we're doing with this consultant. That's something Rebecca and I have talked about a lot, it's that, you know. Our, our job as town employees is, is to, you know, also compare to the state and also put forward. Information for the town, and so that's why we've heard a lot of negative about MBTA zoning, but our job is to still. Help put a proposal together, get fundings to get a proposal together.
Yeah, but not roll it over dead.
No, and when we were going through this, when there was an initial comment period for MBTA, we did submit comments, you know, how seven hundred, our original total was seven hundred and fifteen. That was originally still a hundred and thirty. So.
Maybe it'll be further reduced, who knows?
Yeah, I figured these projects come on board, we're gonna see.
I mean, we're gonna put seven hundred and fifty units.
With stats that said so far, out of everything that has been approved at town meetings, they, I think, what did they say, I think like, I'm gonna bunch the numbers, but say. So far, twenty thousand units of housing have been zoned for. They anticipate less than ten of those will ever actually be built, given the locations that have been chosen.
So it's a little bit of a dance, it's a little bit of a tap dance.
Yes, absolutely.
And with, and with everybody, like, the number one concern of everybody you talk to in town is money, 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 right? And if, I mean, if grant money gets shut off. That's a huge blow.
But we haven't had grant money until the best, we never had a lot of grant. What, what's the calculation for the, um, for the house that goes up?
Oh, I don't.
Okay, with town, somebody.
I don't know what it is.
It was, it was something that for every house that went up. The town went into, did that, what, sixteen thousand per month, something like that, because of the schools fire or whatever. Okay, and so you start putting all these extra, you know, places out, and large tramways moved into them, the service number goes up. So housing is not the answer. Right, it's business, right.
Smart targeted business, of course.
So, but when they say, hey, it's wonderful, we got more houses in, we benefit from more revenue, no, you don't, it's a total loss.
It's business.
It's the business that comes in, and then the business part, we, we have an even keel right now. You know, other towns and cities do have a little difference between. It doesn't have to be much.
A lot of, just look around, I'll surround the towns, they just have way more business than us.
I'm sorry, but we didn't have the infrastructure to pick business.
Which, these things are all going hand in hand. If we're getting a water treatment plant ultimately some way by hook or by crook. Then that's gonna be, that's gonna be, that's gonna be appealing.
I missed that one, why are we getting a water treatment?
Where, where we, where, because of. The new P S regulation that the EPA is coming out with are, are.
Super site is not a location, Phil?
That site is going to get me in my brain, um. So the, um, building that they built, the EPA built is on church property.
That's right.
And, um, we tried to buy it from them and they said, no, we're gonna put it out to sale for other developers, and I think Jack and Grace have been. Is to put a very long story. So we did look into it, our town administrator, our water and sewer superintendent looked into it, but it's on church property and they. And I believe calling with additional research, the water and sewer superintendent with additional research, it's gonna be a little too small. And be able to connect it to where our well stations are would be exorbitant. They have it, they, um, I believe they just funded a study to, to look into where a water treatment plant is going to be, so they. The Water and Sewer Commission's handling it, I don't know much.
That's what they did get a grant to do.
We have, should we have someone from Water and Sewer come over and talk to us about this? Because it seems like a pretty important town issue.
About.
About, just, I mean, just so we can be on board, like, what I, what I noticed is.
Is there gonna be enough level? And I mean.
That was brought up at the meet, that was brought up.
Right. You look in the cryer and people are talking about brown water, I mean, you know, it's. So, you, you know, like, if, if we're gonna encourage business, we, we all kind of agree the targeted business is the way. Then we gotta have the facilities to, to bring.
Yeah, so I mean, if. If, if you wanted to reach out to the, uh, Water and Sewer Superintendent or just the commission. And ask, um, you guys, they would want to do a joint meeting or, um, what's coming?
Yeah, just someone coming in, they're gonna let us know.
I believe the chair is still built on, I don't know if they reorganized.
Just reminding us something, the, um, that was one of the positions that we had on the planning board was liaison. And, and, uh, once a month, or once a quarter, depending on what, what was going on, we had a member of the board appear. Sprinkle around to all meetings and give planning board speak. Okay, and then take notations of what was going on. I held that position for years because we were, we had a lot of the new boards that were coming through, didn't know. Particularly when we enacted the new subdivision control law, there's a whole section. That all the other boards have to give their input on subdivisions. Um, and they don't even know what they were supposed to do, but there's a list, so that was part of that, but the liaison piece worked out pretty good, so if anybody. But then, that was positions we had to do that, and when something popped up, like, whoop, we, we didn't know about that. Um, you know, you could field it and then you could.
The economic, uh, development, or not economic, we have a monthly meeting where it's myself. The town administrator, the building commissioner, water and sewer department, light department, highway superintendent. I hope I'm not permitting anyone, um, once a month to touch base on all ongoing projects. Um, whether they be planning work projects such as a new subdivision, or, you know, the water department is replacing the line here, oh, highway department, how about you pave this after? So we're doing that from, with, for a department head standpoint, just so you're aware, um, but.
Yeah, that's been going on for a while, but the only problem with that is that those are town employees. Okay, and they're not elected officials that actually answer for the people, that voted by the people, to work for the people, so that we get left out of the loop on that, oh, and agrees that you have to give us. Um, on that, but, you know, there's a lot more elected officials in town than I think town employees.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so we're not in the loop on that, and that's the unfortunate part.
Well, I mean, so this is part of why we're having these meetings, we're talking about this, helping try and do, see if we can get better systems put there, so that we don't feel. So, I, yeah, I mean.
And I think that you called the water department.
Come over and tell us what's going on.
Call him, it doesn't matter, then everyone's. Yeah, pretty good.
Right.
All right.
I can reach out to see if either of them are available on the, um, on June.
That'd be awesome.
Anything else? Any other items?
No, that was all I had.
Hey, before we close up, can I just say, you know, thanks to everybody, like, I'm coming from zero as far as this type of experience, but. Like, everybody's been super helpful, you're gonna be a great resource. like, everybody's been super helpful, you're gonna be a great resource, I know it, um. Annie and Rebecca have been amazing, like, it, the thing, you know, before I, before I decided to run, I came in and sat in the meeting and I watched. And I listened and I was, I was really impressed, like, you know, for a small town, we've got some good green matter going on and it's, it's nice. I'm glad to be a part and I appreciate what everyone's doing.
Welcome. Thank you for putting your time in.
I'm being a student and, you know, like, you know, I'm not a wall follower either, but, you know, to see point, you know, like, I understand that, I got a lot to learn, so it's good.
Would that motion be?
Sure, it's hot in here.
Anyone else?
Second?
Second.
Follow the favor? Meeting adjourned at eight thirty-eight, May twenty.